Signed up, okay? The July 21st meeting of the Marion Town Council shall now come to order. We will start with the invocation given by Chief Kevin Testerman.
Good morning, my honor. Dear heavenly Father, we come before with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and input on all matters as a community, as a nation. We're grateful for the blessings you have provided us. In everything we do here tonight, be blessed by your blessings and please keep the family of Hunter Reedy in mind. As we've done a brief dedication theme this past Friday, in your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Marion Town Council. Want to welcome everyone that's viewing remotely as well. We have a nice crowd tonight, so it's good to see everybody. We will start with the roll call. And I see that we have one member of council that is absent. I know he won't be with us, so Larry Carter won't be with us tonight. Is there any need for a formal roll call? Are we good? We're good? All right. We will need to start with the approval of the minutes of our July 7th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the minutes?
They were good.
Well, I noticed in the minutes that my report, my biannual report was not included in the minutes. In my biannual report, I did mention a deep dive into the water billing system. I mentioned some checking on some credit card expenditures and making sure those go to the proper departments, website maintenance, and issues with iPads. I also mentioned that I will continue my report when the full council is available. I have this written and would officially like to request that the minutes be altered to reflect my biannual report.
Okay. Well, I'll rescind by second motion, I guess.
Well, we can, I think we can amend that.
We can amend it to include that amendment.
Oh, I made, I made the motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And to make matters easier, I did write this down for you so that you don't have to make a lot of notes on that amendment. We'll bring it to a vote. All in favor? And we have the minutes approved. We need an approval of our agenda.
I would like to add something to the closed session. I'd like to add personnel, A1, along with the other two items. It won't take about five minutes or so.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, thank you.
And are there any other additions or... So, all in favor of the minutes? We have a unanimous approval of the minutes. I mean, of the agenda, sorry. We'll begin with public hearings, which we have none of. And so we will start with public comment time. We'll take them as they come. And the first one that we have signed up for public comment is Mr. Bill Stamper. Bill, you know to approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Bill Stamper, 659 Spruce. So, I'd just like to say this. What I have to say, I mean, I'm hoping that y'all take to heart, and this is about holding somebody accountable that's in a position here. Saturday on Facebook, there was a, there was some posts made about the sign or whatever, you know, out there, the lake being covered and whatnot. Anyway, they had a bunch of people on there that was saying some stuff about it, including myself. Well, Ken Heath decided he was going to get on there and start bashing people, including myself. And I had several things to say about it. And I noticed after I called him out, he blocked me from the Marion page. Not only that, he deleted all of my comments, which is illegal under 42 U.S.C. subsection 1983. He should be held accountable. That's illegal for anybody to do that under a public website. You cannot delete messages. You cannot block anybody. And I've got proof that he blocked me. I've got proof that he deleted it. And I've got proof that he said that it was him that was on the page that was making all the comments. Not only that, this is not the first time he's done it. Several years back, he actually blocked another one of my accounts because I had called him out on it. And he asked me if I would come down and have a meeting with him that following morning. And I said, sure, yeah, you know, let's meet and talk. I come in, he had three cops sitting down there waiting on me because he said that he was in fear of his life. I was a dangerous individual and I was unstable. You can pull up my rap sheet. There's nothing on there that's, other than, I think, a speeding charge and a seatbelt and, I think, a tag. I've never been a violent person. I've never been a mean individual. None of that. So, I would like for him to be held accountable. And I'm asking the three new council members to take that into consideration. You don't have to follow suit. You've got your own minds. You can do what you want to do. But I will say this, if he's not held accountable, then that leaves either him personally up to a lawsuit or it leaves the town up to a lawsuit. So, with that being said, you've got to make a decision. You want the town people to pay lawsuits and fines? Or would you rather get rid of the problem? I don't understand why y'all have to be voted in. But with Ken Heath, his position's not voted in. I want to know what he'd done to get that position. I want to know why he's been in it for 20-some years or whatever. And every time somebody complains, it's like he gets a raise or he gets motivated up and everybody else gets shut down and blocked and put down and all that. So, I'm asking y'all to hold him accountable. If not for y'all's sake, at least for the town's sake. Because we give enough money as it is, and I don't think the people here want to pay a lawsuit. And it's, I'm not going to do that because I'm not that kind of individual. I won't take money from the people sitting behind me because they give too much as it is. But you will find one jerk out there that will do it. You absolutely will. So, I'm asking that y'all hold him accountable. And I'm asking he either be fired or he gives his resignation. I think I said it right. Resignation. And like I said, you know, the three new councils, y'all don't have to follow suit. Y'all can, you know, you've got your own mind. And I'm asking y'all to hold him accountable. Ms. Hayes, I'd just like to tell you one thing. I don't know if you remember me or not, but all them sidewalk runs you made me run. That's the only thing I disagree with you, but I love you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, and we will take that into consideration. The next person that we have is Carolyn... Case. Okay, I'm very sorry, I couldn't read that. But Carolyn Case, please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Carolyn Case, I live at 222 North Street. I'll make this quick. We have two problems in our neighborhood. One, and I have talked with Mr. Hamm about this, of the homeless and what's going on. And I understand that there are preparations being made to deal with that. I'm not as concerned about that as I am about Billy Earp's house down at the bottom of Jones Street. I understand. I have not been down there to see it myself, but I have seen the people coming out of there. And in fact, I think one of them wound up on my porch in the middle of the night. And we just see, we see traffic going down there. We see all sorts of things. And I just would like to have something done about it. Now, I've talked with Chief Testament, and he did say that he would increase the... Yeah, thank you. Anyway, yeah, and that's good. But still, there have been people just parking outside our houses at night. We don't know what they're doing. But that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And next, we have Lynn Van... Van Dulson. Sorry, I...
That's okay.
But please, approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Lynn Van Dulson, 311 Bluff. It's our neighbors. We're all here together, basically, addressing the homeless situation. I don't know what has been done or not been done, but again, my kitchen window overlooks the encampment. And the concerns, too, there are the sewage. Where's all that sewage going? Right back into down below the river there? Or, I mean, we've heard it's going to be addressed. I don't really see that. We've got people traipsing back and forth. We don't know this is factual, but from other neighbors and what we've seen, transitions, it looks like there's drug trading and stuff going on with people coming in and out. And one of our neighbors has small children. There's a concern there. She doesn't want her kids exposed to that. So, there are a lot of concerns. I personally have called the police on them twice for domestic violence type of stuff, the screaming, yelling, hitting, pushing. The police have been down there. You know, I'm on record for calling. But I mean, as a person that came from domestic abuse, I can't tolerate that type of behavior. And I don't know what's going on. And I don't know, you know, if there's firearms or what have you. It's not a healthy situation. So, we're just hoping that we could get some help with it and that it doesn't come to a head at some point.
I have a question, if I may.
Please.
Can we tell this lady and the people that have come what's in the works?
I don't believe that we can legally.
We had, I'm not sure which police, whoever Carolyn spoke to, that there have been warrants or there is a bench warrant or a no-show and...
The town has started the legal process.
Okay. And the "I'm not going to show up" kind of thing. So, yeah, I guess that is in the process. But it's just not a real safe situation there at all because you can tell, having a medical background, there are people that are very, I don't know if I'd use the word even intoxicated, but they're high. You could see by the movement, you can see the walking. So, you've got people who are strung out on stuff, walking in and out of that area, coming through, which I was going to say the Grams and then us and Judge Lincoln, coming right through that property. That's a lawsuit on us if they fall. I hurt my leg or I did whatever or the dog did, you know, that's a lawsuit. So, there is concern there. We're hoping it can be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Becky Rankin. Becky, please approach the podium and give us your name and address.
Becky Rankin, 216 North Street. And I'm coming about the homeless people, too, because I live beside all these people. And they stop at my driveway in the back of my house, and my dogs go crazy. And they just stand there and look at my house. I don't know if they're planning on robbing my house or what they're planning on doing. Then the other morning, my little dog woke me up at 3:00, and I went out to the front of my house. And there was a blue truck parked outside the front of my house at 3:00 in the morning. I came back in the house to leave my dog out there a few minutes. I came back out, the truck was still out there. I walked to the front of my fence because I was going to say something to him, which was probably not a smart thing to do, but I was going to. They took off and went down to Billy's. So, we just, we're, you know, we're upset because we don't want these people in our neighborhood. And also, where are they going to the bathroom? Are they going in the river? I mean, you know, it's dangerous. And like Carolyn and Lynn said, a lot of them are on, well, we don't know if they're on drugs, but they act, normal people don't act like they act when you see them out there. So, I hope we can get something done about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Becky, thank you. As Billy said, we are in the legal process, and there are certain things that we cannot divulge. Mark Archibald, did you intend to speak to us tonight?
Yes, but I was expecting to go ahead with the special tree. I'll go now if you prefer. I put the tree ordinance under Todd Law. I didn't get Mark's acknowledgement. But so I put the tree ordinance under Todd. I spoke with Mark before the meeting, and we agreed that maybe him and Todd do the tree ordinance.
I didn't see his name there, so I was unaware, unsure. But that's good.
I agree with Todd and Mark.
We will catch up with you here in a little bit, then. We look forward to your input. That closes the public comment section of our meeting. And I appreciate everyone's comments. We will continue along now with council reports. And we're going to go reverse order to give Deborah a little bit of time to prepare. So, we will go first with Todd May.
Just relaying a message from Janine Walker that Ken had an absolute awesome event this weekend, and he knocked it out of the park. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Councilwoman May, thank you very much. Councilwoman Atwell.
No report.
No report?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Okay, just what Todd said, it was a really good weekend, and I think everybody had a good time and heard lots of comments, positive comments for change.
Okay, that's good news. Anything further?
No.
No? Okay, Councilwoman Spencer.
No report.
No report, okay. Vice Mayor Gates.
No report, Your Honor.
No report, okay. And now, we have Councilwoman Deborah Hayes.
Mr. Carter and I had a meeting. We're on the Town Uplift Committee. And we have been discussing exit 45. Someone came, I'm not sure who it was, to a meeting and discussed that it looked, it didn't look nice there, didn't look inviting. So, we're working on that, on that project. And we've got some good ideas, so we'll have that together for you soon.
Can you think further? Is this a thought?
Is this a follow-up on Chad Armstrong's presentation?
The welcome area there by the state, the state hospital down below there.
And do you have, thank you for your report. Do you have anything further? No, okay. We will go ahead with the council and mayor's report, and the mayor's report as well. We've had a lot of summer of activity. We did meet with the Personnel Committee, and we had, we had a nice meeting there. I did speak with the father of Billy Wagner, who is going to be inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame on, I believe, the 27th. And I think that's worth mentioning, that someone that actually was in Marion, and actually played ball with our Rec Department and as such, was, I was looking for something that I guess I misplaced. Oh, no. Yes, here I have it, which is great, because I have a picture here of Billy Wagner in a Marion recreation uniform, which means that our Recreation Department actually had a player that is going to be in the Baseball Hall of Fame. And so Recreation is important in the town of Marion. And also, I think that Billy would approve of us acknowledging him, and his father said so. So I'm going to believe in that, and I think it's a cute photo. I hope that we can use that at some point in the future, if we can come up with some type of effort to honor him, whether it's post-induction or pre. So wanted to mention that. Well, I've spent some time here in Town Hall, speaking with a few people, dreaming up some ideas to make Marion a better place, planning for the, for the events that we had this weekend. Phantom played at the downtown on Friday, and then we had the Hungriest Mother Downtown Festival, which we were glad to welcome Natalia Hillen as our guest emcee. And I want to say thanks to Henry Thomas for all the coverage. It was a well-attended event. I think everybody had a good time and indigestion a little later. I want to say thanks to Soul Sandwich, From the Edge, and Meatloaf for some really great music. And I think that that was something that is necessary. And to reiterate everyone else's comments, they knocked it out of the park this time. And also, speaking of knocking it out of the park, we had representation there of the Hungry Mother baseball team, and we also had representation there from the Marion Scarlet Hurricanes football team. And they were really good to have them in the event. My appreciation to all those people that, that we had. We have a hero with us today, Mike Thomas stopped a bad actor today. That's currently under investigation, so we can't go much further into it. But when you see something wrong, do something about it. And Mike did. Thank you, Mike. And he didn't want me to say that, but that's all right. And, okay, in response to the deep dive that I asked council to look into regarding our water billing department, and seeing that we have, I have spoke with committee members, and we have no response from committee as of yet. I have been instructed that I can work with Cindy and Mandy about some of the questions that I have into the billing process. While I make no allegations of any wrongdoing, but to help better understand the problem that we're having in the billing department, and pursuant to my authority as the mayor of the town of Marion, I hereby issue a formal request for the following records and information relating to the operations of the Water Billing Department. And this request is intended to cover the full years of 2023, '24, and '25 up to this date. There may not be a need of all of this information after I work with Cindy and Mandy to answer some of the questions, but I'm going to go ahead and tender this request. And it may end up that I'm not entitled to all of this information. But as it is, I am going to make this official mayor's request for information pursuant to my abilities as the mayor of Marion, Virginia.
Are you making that as a Freedom of Information request?
Mark, I'm making it as a request for information that will be kept confidential and only shared with council. Am I within my rights to make this request?
I'm not, I'm not sure if you're making this personally, individually.
No, no, I'm making this as the mayor of Marion.
This is information you're wanting the whole council to.
Yes, I will share the information with council, of course, but.
I just wanted to confirm you were not making a Freedom of Information request.
No, 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 oh, that's what you said, okay. No, this is not a full year request. This is a request from the mayor's office for information regarding the Water Billing Department. Yes.
I just would like to say something. I can't sit here and not say it. And with all due respect, personnel issues, I don't think should be voiced in public. I think we should meet with the people, the personnel, or the water department, or wherever, before anything is brought, you know, to the public. Because I've talked with Mandy, and understand why that bill got as high as it did. And I think they were following protocol. Billy, you know more about that than I do, probably.
I might just interject, that if this was something that was occurring during the COVID period of time.
No, it wasn't.
If it was, the town of Marion was not able to cut off anyone.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've always been very professional, I think, and not talked about, because personnel is a reason that can go into closed session. And I think that's where, if we've got a problem personnel, I think that's where we need to talk about it first and find out the information. But now, that's just my opinion. It's just my opinion.
I'm not alleging any personnel issues. I just clearly want information that I believe I'm entitled to as the mayor of Marion. And it's my duty to, to do this. And I've given council the time and ability to form a committee meeting, and council has no resolve to do that, so I will do it.
Well, maybe it should come through the Personnel Committee, because we'll certainly do it.
Well, I don't understand how water billing would fall under the Personnel Committee.
I guess because it takes the personnel to do it, but, but I just wanted to say, that's just my opinion, and I won't say.
Cecily, I'm not alleging any wrongdoing, any problems with any personnel. I'm saying that we have a broken system, and we need to define the system so that we can make alterations to the system, so that we can solve the problem and go forward. We don't want to kick the can down the road. We need to look at it, look at what's going on now, find the solution, find the problem, solve it, move on. And if council doesn't have the resolve. Order, please, thank you, but order. If council doesn't have the resolve to solve this problem, then I will look at it. I cannot, under the mayor's power, form any type of audit or anything else. All I can do is look at the information, give that information to council, and share that information so that we make informed decisions. I don't see any reason for it to go to Personnel, but it will definitely be on your desk, because you're a member of this council.
Thank you.
That's the best I can do?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I just have one question for Cindy. I met with Cindy, and she walked me through the billing process, and it's a three-step process. So I'm just curious, Cindy's opinion, do you see that it's broken? I mean, there's three checks and balances, from my understanding.
We'll certainly work with the mayor and try to explain whatever he would like to explain.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have any problems here that we can't work through, through sharing of information. And I'm just making a request for that information, so that I can digest it and understand the system.
Mandy's very able and willing to talk to you.
I, I intend fully to work with Cindy and Mandy. That was Dr. Gates, or Vice Mayor Gates's suggestion, that I do that, but I need to.
That's what I'm trying to say, I guess, you know.
Well, I voiced it several times, and I'm not going to make my case here. I'll simply look at the information, and then I'll ask the questions that I need to ask. I'm more than willing and able to work with anyone on these items. But I've had numerous complaints about estimated billing. I've had complaints about what I want to call dual billing. And I've had these questions come up over the six months that I've been here. And if you remember, I have asked several times for this to be explained. And I have not understood the explanations up until this point in time. So I have to get it into my system so that I understand it, because that's my position as mayor. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus. I'm just simply asking for information. And I appreciate everyone's willingness to work with me on that. We'll fix the problem, we'll go forward. And that will conclude my mayor's report, unless there are any further questions or discussion. Oh, the Town and Country Dinner. I didn't have that on mind, and, and I don't have the date for that. So we will be having the Town and Country Dinner.
September 4th at 6:00 p.m.
Sorry, that's my fault, and I did not see that in the agenda. So, okay, we do have the Town and Country Dinner coming up on September the 4th at the Chilhali Airplane Hangar, and the Chamber of Commerce always does a really good job with that. And it's always a wonderful event, and preregistration is required. So if anyone would like to go to that event, they can get in touch with the chamber and/or register. I doubt that this is a register here active icon on our website, or on this packet. Am I correct in that?
If they, if anyone intends to go, you need to let me know, and I will register it.
But it is open to the public as well.
Oh, sure, yeah.
It's in my packet, and you want, on my agenda, so.
Yeah, it's open to the public.
I'm guessing.
What is the cost for that, Cindy? It doesn't say on here.
Well, the town of Marion is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and in the past, if council has attended, the town of Marion has paid the cost for council members, and actually, I guess, paid for me to go some too.
Okay, so if you want to go to the dinner, let Cindy know. And that does conclude the mayor's report, unless there's anything else, so we'll go with the attorney's report.
No report.
No report from Mr. Finnick. We will go with staff reports. Cindy Stanley. Okay, so we need to put the accounts before the council and make a motion to pay the accounts.
I'll make that motion.
Would anyone second that motion? Motion and second. That being said, are there any questions about any of these accounts? Any of these billings and payments, or anything that we need to look at? No questions being heard, then we will take it to a vote. Everyone in favor of paying the bills, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous, we will pay the bills. Chief Testament.
Ms. Finchley, as far as I'm aware, I ended up graduating from the Southern Police Institute with an organizational management certificate. That involved four, four different weeks of lieutenant's training, like budgeting, strategic management, performance management. And it was really a great opportunity, not only in Marion, but Southwest Virginia's. Chief Hamm worked for the police department as a lieutenant, and was able to secure grants to be able to send, and grant, go through congressional funding to be able to send several agencies through this training. So, like I said, not only made us stronger, but our whole region. And this past Friday as well, officers attended the Hunter Reedy Bridge Dedication at Will. That's going on a year now since his passing. We're taking applications, looking to be starting hiring process soon. And we're also in the middle of promotional process for lieutenants. And that's, that's all I have. Is there any questions?
No, but thank you for your reporting, especially on the Hunter Reedy Bridge dedication. I think that's a fitting honor, and as, as his widow said, that she would rather have him vote. Thank you for your report, and we will move forward. We have Chief Hamm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Some general updates. Deputy Chief Kiesler and I have been working on some grants here the last couple of weeks. We have a couple of our part-time applicants that are reported on earlier this season that are nearing the end of their hiring process. I'll be sure to keep everyone updated on that. As far as our call totals, for the month of June, we were at 236. And year-to-date, 1,294 calls for service. To give you some comparison, in June of '24, we had 214 calls for service, so this, this, June's up just a little bit. And year-to-date was 1,292. So we're right kind of on course with where we were last year at this time. As far as public events goes, we also attended the bridge dedication for Hunter Reedy last week. We've visited a couple of daycares and got a couple of daycares yet to go. We actually have a lifetime wellness center visit tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. for the kiddies up there. We have a first responder day coming up at Freedom Tabernacle Church. And we're gearing up for National Night Out with our partners at the Marion Police Department. I'd also like to just comment, a great event this past weekend. We were fortunate enough to be down and participate in that. It was, it was really good. And that's all I have for you for this meeting, unless you have some questions.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Rusty, I don't know if you spoke to Fred Wyatt about, he was requesting if maybe you have an ambulance at Marion football games this year?
Yes, I spoke with Fred downtown the other night. He's got me the JV schedule, and I'm waiting on the varsity schedule. That's something historically that we've done in the past, and something we're planning on doing again. We have a couple of members, part-time team members, that really enjoy that thing. So I don't think we're going to have a big issue getting that covered, but we're certainly going to be there for our, our youth athletes at Marion Senior High.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I forgot to mention, I do think Public Works, Marion Fire, and EMS, for all of their participation and helping out at the festivals this weekend, your presence.
Public Works gets a, gets a huge nod. It's a, it's a big lift for them, these events, and they always do a really, really good job.
It takes all of that to make these things happen.
Yes, sir.
And this one went off very well.
It did.
Thank you for your.
Yep, thank you all.
I see that Ken is not with us for his report on economic development, so. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
He'll be back by the time for the meeting or not.
Okay, that, we'll, we'll go ahead and skip Mr. Heath's report. I think we all know that he had an exhausting weekend as well. So I hope that all of his, all of his things are going well today. We will now continue with Todd Long with zoning and property maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, please, the council office, will you be okay for Mark to go first?
Yes.
All righty, good evening. For those council members that were on last fall, a lot of this is redundant from the presentation I made when we first brought the changes to you in the fall. I thought it would be worthwhile to repeat some of that. This is updated, but both to refresh your memory and for the new council members as well. So a couple of things I'm going to mention just about the tree commission and then I'll go into the, basically the nutshell summary of the new, the proposed ordinance. So the tree commission is comprised of myself, Adam Tilson, Heather Bunch, Eric Clubson, Tom Howser, Howard, excuse me. And I think we're very fortunate, we have just asked Dr. Gates if he would join us as a member representing you, the council. And he has said that he would do that. So we are looking forward to working with him. So first off, a little bit about trees, because obviously, we believe that trees are very important to the community. So just hit some of the highlights here. Reduced energy costs, higher property values, reduced noise and sound, cooler neighborhoods, green space has been shown over and again to improve mental and physical health and, excuse me, and help to mitigate the effects of climate change. So those are just a few of the benefits for trees and why we think trees are very important to Marion. We are a Tree City, USA town and we have been for 23 years, so we'll be reapplying for that at the end of the year. Some of the requirements that we have to meet each year in order to remain a Tree City, USA, is have a tree commission, which we do, I represent here. Have a tree ordinance, which we're asking you to revise tonight to, to bring it up to date. And to have some type of community forestry program. And the requirement there is that the budget at least be $2 per capita of the people that live in the town. And we have been spending that on our, our trees and landscaping. And also that we have an Arbor Day proclamation and a celebration, which the last few years we've been doing that at the middle school. Mayor Cornett gave the proclamation this year and we appreciate that. And that's something that, that we look forward to each year. One quick note that I wanted to tell you, we have received a grant from the Virginia Department of Forestry. It has two components. The Urban Forest Master Plan, which will actually be the first part of the two parts components. Green Infrastructure Incorporated has been contracted through the State Department of Forestry to do that master plan. We are currently putting together the working group that will work with them, so we may come talk to some of you and also some of the, the staff from the town to put together that, that working group. That will start in October. And then we also have design assistance for Wasona Circle. You perhaps remember me talking about that before. They will be doing the design work, they will be doing the preparation work and planting trees out there. The town will still have to remove the trees that we have identified as being in need of removal there, but that will be following the master plans because master plan may provide information that would guide that. So the proposed revisions, there were a lot of minor edits that just, things that needed to be cleaned up. Not content, but simply just editorial. But beyond that, we looked at really a more holistic approach to the tree ordinance when we were working on that. Looking for an enhanced value, which to the town, to, to all of us. Ecological, aesthetic, functional, all of those benefits that I mentioned on the previous slide. We've included a little more on shrubs and vegetation because it is actually the tree and landscaping ordinance. We have been more specific about both species that we do not want to plant, such as invasive species, and those that are desirable, and a little bit about the management plan. So to look at some of the more substantive changes, there were, we introduced the concept, and at this point, we still had Sally's crying tree with us and that was high on our minds, but we introduced the concept of significant trees and that they would give, whatever we identify as significant trees would get special attention from the tree commission and from the town. And that includes monitoring the condition. We are doing that with the trees that we planted in commemoration of Sally's crying tree, by the way. We made some changes to the ordinance regarding the tree commission itself, including the number of members, which, to my knowledge, it has never had what was actually required. So we made that a more realistic number. And we would like to be more involved in a lot of the, the decisions because we do have people that are passionate and knowledgeable about trees. And so we tried to include that. There was a clarification of the desirable species of trees to be planted in public spaces and, including adding the definition of what that is, a desirable tree. Clarification and enhancement of procedures for maintaining, trimming, cutting and removing public trees. So again, we clarified and amplified that a little bit. Tried to enhance our role and, in, in that process because we want to be involved in the process of making decisions about the maintenance and the planting of the trees here in town. The, this body forwarded it to the, or recommended it to the Planning Commission. They have reviewed it, made a, made a number of changes. The tree commission supports those changes and what you have is the, the result of that process. And Todd can talk more about this, but I believe there needs to be a public comment period. But I would like to say that the tree commission does recommend adoption of the revisions to the tree ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might add, what, what you have in your packet is the revised proposed tree ordinance. There is no set funding mechanism. It, it does indicate that people can donate to the tree commission and that the town council can, from town to town, allocate revenue sources to the tree commission, but it definitely does not have any tie to the number of citizens in the Town Marion as far as the $2 per person. It, it is an advisory committee only. It does put a lot of authority in the town manager because the town, when the town goes forward and makes repairs to water and sewer, that, that's paramount to the town. So the town can't sit around and take no action until a committee can meet to, to discuss it. So that the town, through the town manager, works on, on this. It's advisory.
Yes, I just, if I can respond real quickly to that. Number one, it does, the ordinance does state that the town manager, we're not in conflict, that the $2 per capita is not part of the ordinance and was not intended to be that. It is a requirement by the Arbor Day Foundation to be eligible for the Tree City, USA. That has been in place for many, many years. So that's not, that's not a part of the ordinance, but it is a part of our responsibility to maintain the tree city's success.
How much money would that be? What would the amount of money be?
About $11,000.
We have meant that for many years, so...
So as Mr. Archibald so eloquently explained here to you, this actually come before council, our council actually referred this to Planning Commission back in February of '24? No, I'm sorry, '25. And it's went to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission has been ready. No, I, I regress, it wasn't '24 when it came before Planning Commission. Planning Commission worked through it. We've ran some stuff by Mark, we've ran some stuff by Mr. Finnick, and I think we've come up with a reasonable plan now that's in your packet. I think the next step would be to do is it'd be to set a public hearing date for this ordinance, updated ordinance, and whenever you all are, are ready to have that public hearing, I'll, I'll advertise it for the, for the state code requirements and, and we can get that one checked off our list.
Let me ask, if you don't mind during your time, has everyone read the tree ordinance in its entirety?
I haven't.
Okay. Just want to make sure that everybody's up to date with that before we go forward with anything.
Sure. I mean, do you need more time or are you ready to set the public hearing? I mean, it's up to council.
I'll make a motion to reset a public hearing.
Second. Can we do it at the next meeting?
No, I don't think I can meet the required advertising requirement for the next meeting.
Do you know what we could?
Mark thinks that we can.
Two, two weeks?
Two, two weeks. It's within two weeks and...
Today's already Monday, so Wednesday's, oh yeah, we, okay, we can do that. What is that date, Cindy?
I want to include that motion in my date. I mean, that date in my motion.
Could be the first council meeting.
August 4th?
Yeah, August 4th.
August.
Tony, I remember when this came up before Bill Rush was concerned about, because if y'all have trees in the right of ways, I mean, you need to be able to take care of them and trim them or whatever. So that doesn't affect that, correct?
I think that's addressed in the, in the new ordinance.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, and we need to take this to any further discussion or do we want to set the public hearing?
I, I think we should set it if, if we've got time.
That's...
That was the motion.
That was the motion. We have a second. No further discussion needed. We'll vote. All in favor of the public hearing being set? Okay.
And the next thing I've got for you, council had referred to Planning Commission several months back now concerning livestock ordinances in town. At our last meeting, I had told you that it's gone through Planning Commission and what Planning Commission's recommendation was to council. We would probably need to set a public hearing for that, well, to change the verbiage in our zoning ordinance.
Can we have that public hearing coincide with the public hearing that we're having for the tree commission?
I mean, sure, that, that would give you two public hearings that night, but you've already got one set. Well, that'd put you three.
We've done that before.
We have done that before.
This would be a short one because the recommendation from the Planning Commission, which is also advisory, says no livestock.
What's the third one? The one, the first one that was on there before we just added the second one?
Next cert project resolution.
We've done it before.
Yeah, and I'm fine with, I'm just waiting for council direction.
Saves time and money. So I think that we can do that quickly if everyone's in favor of that. We would, I'm sorry, I'm lost. Is, do we need a motion and a second to set that?
Need a motion second to set that date, yes.
I'll make a motion to set that date for August 4th for the hearing for the livestock.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
And that's all I have unless you got any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
None heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mark.
Billy Ham.
I'll give you some quick updates on where we're at on certain projects. Phase eight sewer, Market Street, the loan closing date is set for August 14th. We've got most of the materials, but we're still waiting on the structures for the project. We'd look to begin that Market Street by September, mid-September, first October. Phase eight sewer, Rose Close Street, we're going to start, resume construction on that within the next couple of weeks. And we anticipate completing that by the fall. Phase nine through 12, we're, as I told you last month, we, we have been working two SERC crews for some time. Right now, we have one crew on East Main and the other one in Cumberland Heights. The crew on, down Cumberland Heights have been working on the tileovers. The main line is installed and they're working on the tileovers to each house. We think we're about 90% complete down here. East Main, Ward Line, we're about 60% complete up here. The East Main, top of the hill. Radio Reed, as I told you last month, we're still waiting on meters. It will be several months before we see. We just, we ordered short on that. Tony's had his crew on South Church Street, trying to reinforce some of the banks of the branch that runs down through there. It's a road in the pavement. Tony did a lot of work out through there, shored up the creek bank and, and the shoulder of the road. I think he's had to pull, pull them off for the last few days, but he's not done by no means up there. Most of you know that with Tony's crews, he's started the Steel Park Playground, started that a little alone. And I haven't been up there and seen what they have done, just getting started. Last, well, next to last, we would like council's blessing on closing Rose, Rose Close Street from Sager Street to Duke Street for our installation of the line that we have to put down there and future development. And that would be a pretty lengthy closure, we assume.
So you need that tonight?
What, what is the, is there residents on that street? Is that just a connecting street?
We think, we think we can, by closing it there, they can come up stately and, and get to their residents.
I've done it several times, it doesn't affect anybody.
Doesn't? Okay.
Not full line, not, everybody has it out, after you.
With what we've got to do there, if it just makes sense, then would, you know, close it or not try to work traffic. It's pretty narrow anyway.
Absolutely, if that's what Public Works needs.
There will be some huge machines in there, that's going to be a...
Do you need a motion on that? Yes.
Yes.
Would need a motion on that. I'll make a motion that we approve the closure on Rose Close Street from Sager to Duke for the duration of time that Public Works needs it to complete the project. I'll second your motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, there, there's one house and I don't think, is, is sort of in the middle of the three. I think there are just three houses, but... I think there are just three houses between Duke and, what's the other one?
Sayers.
No.
No, or Hut.
Hut.
Hut, there, I think there are just three houses through there. There's one house in the middle. Are they going to be able to get around to that?
They can either go Duke or they can go Hut, either one.
Okay, and then just make that little cut real quick. Okay, I know there's some times and that may be dug up and it'll be a little bit, but they can make that little?
Yeah.
Okay.
How long would that last?
Depends on the rock. I'm going to say six months, maybe.
Really?
That's what I'm going to do.
We've, we've hit a lot of rock, you know, when you hit rockets.
Just a quick question, the residents, are they knowledgeable that we need to do this?
Oh, we'll make them aware.
Well... Then if, if it needs, if it needs to be done, then...
Oh, it has to be done.
Needs to be done. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor of closing that street? Okay, will do.
Also, last, last thing I have, I put an email for Bill Huber in your packet. I'd like for you to look at, and it's not very self-explanatory, it's on the issue down River Street, extending the walking trail. I think it was brought to council a year, year and a half ago. He'd like for us to revisit that. If you all would take a minute and look at the email and, and get back with me, give me some guidance on that proceeding.
We'll take a look at that.
Other than that, if you have questions.
Is there any paving that's going to happen soon or anything?
We will have a fall paving scheduled.
Okay.
We're, Tony and I have talked, we, you know, we tried to do it with the SERC schedule, but we're going to have to get off of the SERC schedule and add a little alarm, so everything else don't be the right.
Thank you, Billy.
Okay, that is all the business that we have during open session for the meeting. We will now go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I forgot one, one fourth thing to address, it's okay.
Ed, if you need the time, please, go right ahead.
I'd actually forgot, I'd actually talked to Mr. Zomf today, he's a member of our Border Zoning Appeals. He has no interest in serving another term, and if I'm not mistaken, his term is up in September, is that correct, Mark?
I believe so.
So we will be a member short, and I think council points or suggests...
Council makes a recommendation.
Recommends.
And then I'll file a petition with the circuit court, and the circuit court appoints.
So I just, I just wanted to make you aware of that because that is coming in a couple of months.
Okay, council, be aware, we need to come up with some names that would be willing to serve on that commission.
And if we could have that by, by the second meeting in August?
Todd, are there requirements for the person that we might include in this?
I would have to look back through the ordinance, but I think they can be a resident of the town of Marion, Portsmouth County. I might be wrong about that. It would be better for me to research that, get back with you next before I say something that's looking correct here.
That, that would be...
They do not have to be town residents, but I think that's what the town has tried to. I believe Billy McCannon had been a member and he moved out into the county.
Uh-huh, right, right.
Okay, so we'll be thinking about that. Thank you, Todd. And that will close our meeting for now. Susie, would you take us into closed session?
I make a motion, we go into closed session to discuss three items. The first one is real estate is allowed under state code 2.23711A3. The second one is legal, is allowed under state code 2.23711A7. And the third one is personnel, is allowed under state code 2.23711A1.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor of going into closed session?
I make a motion we come back into open session and declare that we only discuss the three possible issues that we had, and that's allowed under State Code 2.23712.
Need a second to our motion?
I'll second.
Get polled.
Poll.
Yes.
Ayes.
Say yes.
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 Did you just agree to go out of session?
Yes.
Go ahead, yeah, you want to come in session, yeah. Individuals say yeah. You know, you could say no and say yes.
I have a question about my iPad before we move. Can I leave it plugged up? There's something wrong with it and it... Can I leave it plugged up all night?
Does he look there?
Oh, we don't.
Well, we've... That was an issue, but we need to go home.
Todd, no, Todd, Dr. Gates has a motion.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
We need to open the doors, I guess. If anybody's out there.
I don't think there is.
Maybe this one.
The tail went home.
The iPads don't work. That's... Do it. Hey, how you doing? Hi, Kevin. Sheesh.
You've been on your feet, wow.
Hope you took a nap.
I believe we need another prayer.
I think he's been up there.
I'll make a motion that the... That we instruct town staff to go ahead with the property cleanup on the property that we discussed in private session on Henry Street.
Second.
Got a motion and second? Do we have any discussion? None being heard, all in favor. It is unanimous.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?